Hello, everyone. I'm Anne Marie Mahoney. Welcome to this special edition of Belmont Journal, an hour-long debate among the three candidates running for two seats on the Belmont School Committee. I hope I bring some special knowledge to this debate since I served on the school committee for 12 years. I was also a former select board member and former chair of the Capital Budget Committee. So you'll see those special interests in some of these questions. Welcome to our candidates. I have with us this evening Amy Zuccarello, Rachel Watson, and Jung Yoo A. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to have a fun time for the next hour. So just take a deep breath and relax. Before we began tonight, the three candidates drew numbers from a hat, and that will be the order in which they are speaking for the opening statement. And then after that, we will be rotating who speaks first, one, two, three, two, three, one, et cetera. So with opening statements, I'm going to turn it over to Amy. You've got two minutes.
Excellent. Thank you. Hello, Belmont neighbors and friends. My name is Amy Zuccarello, and I'm a candidate for school committee in Belmont. Belmont is my hometown. And because I believe that Belmont is the very best place to raise a family, I returned here to raise mine. I live with my husband and two children, one, a freshman at Belmont High School, and the other, a 2021 graduate. Our kids deserve the very best experience that our public schools can offer them. And I decided to run for school committee because I am the right candidate for Belmont right now. My background and skill set, what I can bring to this committee, complements the skills and abilities of other members of the school committee. First, I have a background in law and in finance. I'm a graduate of Boston College Law School and a lawyer with more than 20 years of experience in finance and financial restructuring. My clients are generally stakeholders in distressed business situations where resources are at a premium. And I am required to think critically and collaboratively to find ways to solve problems. I know how to negotiate, and I know how to build consensus. And most importantly, I can stand my ground on important issues while maintaining relationships with key stakeholders at the same time. Second, I have a proven record of service to our students in Belmont. I've led all of Belmont Girl Scouts since 2018. I've served as an officer and board member of Palms, and I've chaired a number of PTA committees and programs. I care very deeply about this town and the future of all of our Belmont students. If elected, I will work tirelessly to ensure that all of our students receive the education they deserve. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Amy. Very nice. We'll move right along to Rachel.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel Watson. I moved here to Belmont about eight years ago when my first child was a toddler, and I was still expecting my second one. I've been through a lot of changes in my time in Belmont. I lived in a house on Grant Avenue. I lived in a house on White Street. But the biggest change happened when my mom moved up here to help me with my kids. I'm a single mom. And both of my children have special needs, which require a bit more advocacy from me as a mom. When she came up here, I did have a little bit more time on my hands. And so I had a chance to chair Belmont's Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. And as part of that work, I attend all of the school committee meetings. I meet with our administration. I meet with student services. And I help advocate for special education parents' interests, generally the interest of students with disabilities, and for our schools overall. I also chaired the Superintendent Screening Committee this year, which was a pretty big time commitment. But obviously, this is an extremely important time and an extremely important choice for our schools. And I felt called to be part of it. If elected, I will continue to devote myself to Belmont schools and the well-being of all of our students.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Jung, take it away.
Hi. I want to thank Belmont Media for having this event. We're finally at a time where we'll be a little bit beyond COVID, where we can actually have a nice conversation with each other face-to-face. And this is an exciting time. And we have our only contested election where we get a chance to actually talk about our schools. My name is Jung Yoo A. My daughter, who plays soccer and climbing, wants to be endorsed by Underwater because she's already a U.A. girl. I lived in Belmont for a dozen years. Actually, moving here after, before I bought a house, I actually interviewed, not visited Butler School, see Mike McAllister, and really loved the town. So we moved here on a memorable Christmas Eve. So been here for a while. Now, many of you know me as Coach Jung. I've been coaching soccer for nine years and actually managing the youth in-town soccer program. And in addition, I was on Butler PTA for two years as a treasurer. And outside of Belmont, I interviewed for MIT for college admissions so that I've seen high school kids striving for colleges, and I know what college they're looking for. Most recently, I interviewed somebody from South Africa, sorry, West Africa in Burkhor, Brazil. So I want to, I'm running for school committee because I want to make a difference in my community. This is a special, difficult time. And that I believe the school need my skills, my experience, and representation. I am a actuary and a certified financial analyst, and I am a trained mediator. So we have some excellent school committee member already. I feel my skill can complement theirs well. So with that, I am going to avoid the buzzer. And back to you, Anne.
All right. Very good. Thank you. That was wonderful. Now we have some idea of who you are and why you're running. Now we're going to move on to our questions. And just as a quick reminder, you'll have two minutes to answer each question. And if you would like to rebut one of the responses from another candidate, just raise your hands, and we'll give you a minute. The candidates have seen these questions ahead of time, so they've had an opportunity to really think about them. So we're looking forward to some interesting back and forth on some of these issues. Let's begin with the basics. What does academic excellence mean to you? How should we preserve, promote, and enhance academic excellence in our schools? And we're going to start with Rachel.
Thank you. I'm going to start with what academic excellence isn't to me, which is regurgitating facts and test scores. To me, academic excellence is the ability to think critically and to problem-solve, to be able to take the facts and apply them across lots of contexts, and knowing how to learn. How do you apply yourself to get new knowledge, to understand a new process? If we want to preserve and enhance academic excellence in Belmont schools, we need to increase project-based learning in the lower grades and in the middle schools to give students a chance to grapple with material, to work with each other, and to actually struggle a little bit. The way you learn to learn is when you are challenged. And you are allowed to work through it. And of course, above all, we need to make sure that all of our students have solid, basic foundational skills in reading and math because they cannot be expected to build on a shaky foundation. And inequities show up later when we miss that kids in kindergarten, first grade, second grade haven't mastered those skills but have been moved along.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Jung, what would you like to offer for us?
So academic excellence, I feel, is many different things. In fact, it means different things for different people. You can think objectively, maybe test scores, graduation rate, college admissions, and so on. But for students, it's really if they're supported and if they are challenged. So we need to make sure they have support and opportunity in terms of being the best that they are. And then, beyond that, for community, you know, we want to keep our reputation of having excellent schools. I mean, that is good for our kids and good for everybody since our house value get to be kept up. We make sure that we don't lose house equities. People want to move to Belmont. We have a thriving community. People can, you know, enjoy talking to each other since a school is really the foundation of community building. Now, in terms of support and opportunities, I have seen that firsthand. I was a first-generation immigrant. I came to here when I was 13 years old and went to public school in New York City, where the first thing I came, I only knew like, you know, 15 words in English. Longest word being restaurant. And I had two years of ESL classes plus a summer program, which prepared me for what was coming. So in high school, I was able to take challenging classes. I took pretty much all honor classes plus ability to take college classes at Queens College in New York, where I took way too many math classes and a couple literature classes. And feel like that prepared me for what was coming beyond that. So, thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Amy, how about you? Academic excellence?
Sure. I think of excellence as giving students the opportunity to perform and achieve in scholastic activities. And from a district point of view, excellence is really about opportunity. You know, from my perspective, I really feel that I have lived this. I grew up here in Belmont. I'm from a working-class family. And I feel like I benefited tremendously from all of the resources and all of the opportunities that I had as a kid in public school. My parents decided to stay here, even back then when it was very expensive. And it's more expensive now. But it was very expensive even back then for that value because they felt that was really important. And Belmont was a town that celebrated excellence. As far as the district is concerned, it starts with good teachers. It also means having administrators who share that belief that excellence is important. A culture that promotes excellence means that excellence is for all students. Nobody should be left behind, and everybody should be encouraged to be everything that they can be. You know, I think about it. And if we don't have opportunity, the risk we have is that we have potential which never gets realized. So I think about students who want to take challenging math classes. If we don't offer those math classes and we don't enable the kids to take those, we have kids with the potential to handle that kind of work and who want to do that work, who can't because we don't offer it. Similarly, if we have a child who really wants to write music, and he's hoping, you know, to have somebody embrace him and show him how to do that, if we don't pair him with a music teacher who cultivates that love, it's again, potential that doesn't become excellence. It's also the same thing for a student who doesn't love school, who maybe goes every day and just kind of trudges through it. Once we have a student connect with an educator who really inspires that kid to decide that, you know, a particular subject is worth learning about, that's excellence, too. So it can mean different things to different people. But we shouldn't be afraid as a district to encourage it and to celebrate it in all forms and in all disciplines.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Okay, going on right away to the real challenge. The school department is asking for millions of dollars from free cash to balance their FY '24 budget. In the two minutes, and I know this is short, can you speak to the real budget busters, which we see as salaries and out-of-district placements? How would you handle the burgeoning budget? And where should this money be coming from? And on this one, we're going to start with Jung.
So I think having a, you know, one-year solution from free cash is really not what we should be talking about. Yes, it matters, and yes, it might help. But for us, what we need to think about is the long term. You know, the school budget isn't one year. The school negotiated contract isn't a single year. And as we move forward, we need to have a frank conversation within our community about what we stand for. I believe we want good schools. I believe that we need to make sure our teachers are well-compensated and the students are happy to be going to school. And with that, you know, thinking beyond just a single year should be our goal. Now, free cash will take us one year. But we should also think about finding other way to fund the school. First of all, we should talk to our state representative looking for state funding. There are special ed circuit breakers that the state is going to giving us support because we have all these out-of-school placement, out-of-district placement, I should say. We should be thinking about how we move forward with our two-and-a-half-person override, proposed proposition two-and-a-half overrides, where it is, you know, we need to figure out how much we need to compensate for the increases we're experiencing with inflation and with cost adjustments. And like Elizabeth DeYoung has suggested, that we should increase our business tax base so now all the funding are coming from the homeowners, where if we are more business-friendly, we can have more storefronts and be able to have a revenue that support both our town and our schools.
Okay. Thank you. Amy, back to you on this one.
Sure. I'll do my best in two minutes to solve all the fiscal problems.
That would be awesome.
Anyway, those who follow the negotiations are probably very familiar with these numbers. But the school committee, the select board, and the Warren Committee have been talking about a budget from the school, from the school committee. And the proposal is essentially that to provide level services going into fiscal year '24, we have a $9.3 million increase over the fiscal year '23 budget. And again, I don't know, I will assume my viewers are not necessarily intimately familiar with the budget. But I will say a total of $5.3 million of the 9.3 are an increase is attributable to nondiscretionary expenses. And those are, broadly speaking, personnel costs under our agreement with the BEA, which has already been negotiated. It's not something we can revisit now for this year, and special education out-of-district placements. So what do we do about this? Assuming we don't have magical money that falls from the sky, which again, would be great, but in my experience, not likely to happen, we need to do a full analysis of not only the remaining $4 million in the ask from the school committee, but also a thorough review, as time permits, of the existing school budget. The budget is 120 pages. And I brought it here because it's very long. This is 120 pages, mostly single-spaced. And it's really a very detailed budget of what we spend money on in the schools. I would very much like to see the school committee review this. And, you know, perhaps they are. But I think this would be a very productive exercise so that people can really understand what we're spending our money on. As an insolvency lawyer, my next step is to figure out where there might be efficiencies. For this year, when we need free cash, absolutely. It's, I can't imagine anything in here which is going to reveal this magical $4 million deductible. But I think we need to think about long-term solutions. And the biggest one there, I think, is finding ways to mitigate out-of-district spending on special education. I imagine you will ask me about that in a minute in a supplemental question. So I will save the rest for that question.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Hi. So, you know, first of all, I just would like to comment on the staff salary portion. I was a nurse in a hospital. I was an ICU nurse. And there are constant complaints about how much it could cost to pay the nurses. But you can't run a hospital without nurses. You can't run a school without teachers. They are, of course, naturally a big part of the budget. You know, and we need to look at the rise in costs of out-of-district placements, not as a Belmont problem, but this is a statewide problem. This is the fallout from closing schools during the pandemic. This is just what happened. It's just a natural consequence of that. And Belmont, we're seeing a bit more of a severe problem. And the reason is we have not invested in special education in our district. We failed to do that long term. We don't have any in-district programs for children who need to be outside of the general education classroom for the majority of the day. We do have some lab programs, which are considered an out-of-district program, that are housed in Belmont. And what we really need to do, if we want to control special education budget costs, is to make sure that we are making room from lab to house programs inside our schools and developing our own programs. But it's like Amy stated, we need an analysis. We need to know what needs are the ones that are getting our students sent out of district most frequently? And how are we going to bring them back? I don't think people realize that when you send a student out of district, not only is the tuition for another school, it's also, we're required federally mandated to pay the transportation. So we're spending thousands of dollars to drive people places when we don't have their programs here. I can't imagine what kind of great things we could fund if we had that money.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Already, I've lost track. How bad is that? I think we're all set, right? We all spoke to that. Okay, good. I'm going to be fired. I'm going to skip the follow-up for now because you've mentioned the out-of-district and you all have some really good thoughts on that. So if we have time at the end, I will go back to that because I think it's kind of critical. But let's move on a little bit. The school department is currently looking for a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, an IT director, and a middle school principal. That's just the highlights. That's a lot of turnover. Let's start with the superintendent's search. What do you feel should be the top priorities for a new superintendent coming to Belmont? And now we get to start with Amy first.
Great. So I have really four priorities. First, I would like to see somebody with a well-established history of leadership and very well-developed leadership skills and experience. Second, someone who can establish and maintain a culture of excellence for all students. I talked a little bit more about academic excellence a minute ago. Someone who can be actively engaged in the review and development of staff. And finally, someone who has great communication skills and gives the school committee transparency into what is happening in the school district. And I think, as we've all said, it's no secret. This is going to be a challenging time for any new superintendent in our schools. And I think that it's fair to say, we saw that last request for an override to fund schools was not successful. And I think people really need to believe in Belmont schools again. And the way that we will do that is if we put forth a superintendent who inspires confidence. And people aren't walking around saying, "Why am I going to fund more of this?" People really need to feel that there's a vision, there's someone who inspires confidence, and somebody who you want to believe in, and really, someone who can restore that kind of faith. Second, again, the culture of academic excellence. Belmont is Belmont. People have moved here for the schools. People are expecting big things from Belmont schools. And we really need someone who understands that and really subscribes to that view as well. Finally, an active role in the, I shouldn't say finally, I have two more, the active role in supervising staff and teachers. And I cannot say enough great things about teachers in our district. But we have some teachers who've been here a long time, and we have some developing teachers. And a superintendent should take interest in the personnel we have in the district and look to make everybody better because we all want to be better. Finally, as I said, communication and transparency, super important. The school committee members do not sit in the schools. We don't visit the schools. We don't have any view into what goes on in the schools unless we have a superintendent who is adequately reporting back. So I think all of those things are the most important for me.
All right. Good. Thank you. Rachel, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have a lot of thoughts on this topic because I actually chaired the Superintendent Screening Committee and worked very hard, not only to understand the role of the superintendent in our school, the relationship with the superintendent in the school committee, and the community at large, the teachers, the students, but also what our community is looking for and wants and needs. I was on the ground collecting that information, listening to focus groups, and trying to understand what it is that our community wants and needs. And I think Amy is correct. Above all, people want someone who is a good communicator, but not just a good communicator, a proactive communicator, someone who is going to let you know what their thoughts are, what their plans might be, before things have already started to move. I find a lot of times in Belmont, we're all sort of finding out after things are already in motion. And we need a superintendent who can get out ahead of that. We need a superintendent who knows how to build relationships, build relationships with the teachers, build relationships with everyone else in the office, build relationships with students, build relationships with the teachers and the principals and the building, but not just within the school system, but outside of the school system. If we want our town to invest in our schools, they need to know that our schools mean something to them. What does it mean to them? And what are we even doing in there? Why do we even need this money? Like, what's going on? We need those relationships. And I believe we need a superintendent who knows how to build equity into the system. Someone who knows when you look at a program, you look at a proposal, how is this going to impact all of our students? Not just the average student, not just the excellent student, not just the struggling student, but how is this going to impact everyone? How is this going to impact the students who have one parent at home? How is this, you know, sorry. Anyway.
All right. Come. Very good. Thank you. Jung, what are your thoughts?
What they said.
Moving on to the next thing.
Well, we do need to find a superintendent. And, you know, from my perspective, we need to find someone who is a community builder because he's going to be one of the leaders within Belmont. I mean, a higher leader, but still, somebody who will help us guide our students, guide our teachers, guide our school system, and help us understand what's going on. We need someone who's a leader. They can take charge, figure out what needs to be done, be accountable for their mistakes, and at the same time, just, you know, communicate. And of course, academic excellence, we already talked about that before. It means that taking care of the teacher, taking care of the student, make sure all the students are supported, make sure all the opportunity and challenges are provided. I want to make sure that as, you know, as we move forward, the superintendent is a vocal member of the community. Now, I really appreciate Rachel's work on superintendent search committee, but it is also our community's job to follow up. We're going to be having interviews and meet and greets with the superintendent candidates, and I encourage people to show up, listen to what they say, ask questions. And just like I have participated in the focus group with this committee and also emailed Meg, Jeff, and Rachel on ideas that I thought would be helpful. So I got positive response in terms of what's going on. And I'm sure if you provide your feedback, the school committee member will be happy to respond. So, thank you.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna use my prerogative as the moderator here. And I'm going to say, and just quickly, it doesn't have to be for two minutes. You've mentioned communication, you've mentioned understanding or knowing what's going on in the schools, and you've mentioned value of the homes tied to the schools. So reflecting from my peer group, some constituencies, particularly those of us who are a little bit older and our kids are long gone, have felt a little bit left out of this superintendent search process. And we're interested, we care. How would you include people like my age group in any processes in the future? Just very quickly, and I think, Rachel, I'll start with you on this one.
I mean, I will start with that when the school committee established the superintendent screening committee, they went ahead, they had a 22-person committee. So they did make an attempt to bring in as many people as they could. But the fact of the matter is, is when we're putting communication out, we need to think about where are people at. Right now, we rely very heavily on emails and websites. And that's not where everyone is, particularly older folks. So we need to know what newspapers do people read? How do we get information in there? Do we go out and visit people in their community groups? Do we go to the Beach Street Center and say, "Hey, we're having, you know, Belmont Schools update"? You know, we need to connect the school, connect the leaders of the school to the community. And not just stakeholders that we normally think about, but everyone. Because like Jung said, the school is the heart of our community in a way. It is the way we're shaping our future. But that doesn't mean we leave everyone else out.
All right, thank you. Jung, more thoughts?
I think one of the problem was that Superintendent Phil actually left us in a really weird place when he announced his retirement in the middle of November. So there was a mad rush to get a screening committee together to actually do a search in a very short amount of time. Have we had more time? I think it's perfectly appropriate to have a couple members at large, or community members at large, or even former superintendent, sorry, former school committee member who had done searches before to be part of the committee. That would have provided more conversation. However, I did feel that we had a large committee with a lot of people who are, you know, try really hard to do this, right? And there's a lot of outsiders, I think, out of school system people on it already. Whereas we've seen other towns like Newton, where they have a 12-member committee out of which like nine of them are in-school people. So we might have done okay, but hopefully, you know, if people feel left out, they should speak up, they should communicate. And, you know, I think those email communications are open for everybody.
Thank you. Amy, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'll tell you, Anne Marie, this is something I'm struggling with in my own campaign. And I think that's because we don't have a newspaper anymore that reports news, right? I mean, it's, and so we have the Belmont Journal, you know, I'm sure that's obviously a great way to reach people, but it is something that's tricky because we don't have the newspaper. And as you said, I mean, people of a certain age are not always on social media, or maybe not ever on social media. And so the messages that I'm getting out even on my campaign, a lot of things go through social media, a lot of things are through email blasts, and not everyone is super facile with those kinds of communications. So I think, you know, what I have tried to do, even direct mail. I mean, I hate to say it, but direct mail's expensive, especially on a campaign side. But, you know, people do read mail. So I think if the idea is that you want to engage with a group of people that maybe don't have kids in the schools right now, and maybe aren't necessarily gonna read, you know, Facebook posts, I think you've got to go back to direct mail. I think you've got to go back to community bulletin boards. You've got to go back to events that happen in town, at the library, at the senior center. I mean, these are really the ways I have found are most productive at engaging people who are not as, you know, social media-heavy in their day-to-day lives.
All right, great, thank you, good thoughts. All right, let's shift a little bit here to my favorite topic. The town takes care of the maintenance and capital work on school buildings and school facilities through the facilities department, and that in the grand scheme of things is fairly recent. That was not always the case. However, there isn't enough capital money available to address big-ticket items such as the channery roof and systems upgrades that are needed there. What should the school department do to ensure that their buildings are well-maintained? And I think on this one, Jung, we're starting with you.
So I believe the capital maintenance is actually the town's responsibility for all the facility, including the schools. So I'm not sure how much the school committee will have direct say in terms of maintenance. That being said, I believe the town should be providing the right upkeep. I support the recommendation of the column report where we budget for the long term. We should fix any small problem when they arise instead of having deferred maintenance. We should have a comprehensive capital budget to work on the long-term planning of our facility. Not just the schools, but also town halls, the library, the rink, and senior center. Everything, we should be making sure that we maintain the property, keep it up so that they can last for a long time. So when we built our high school, we built in green initiative where overall the high school is actually more energy-efficient and less costly for us to maintain. And in a long-term planning, I believe that's the right approach where in the long run, it will save the town money and will have better facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Amy?
Sure. So I think this is another example of triage and priorities. It's a wants-and-need situation. Just, you know, although this is not directly within the control of the school committee, it's something else like everything in this, you know, giant pile here. There are things that it's nice to have, there are other things that we absolutely have to have because they're critical. So I think the first thing is that we have to always be assessing which issues we have to remedy most urgently and which are things that we want to get to or will get to when we can. Establishing reserves, taking advantage of community development and tax credits whenever those are available, and they are available sometimes. Those are very good strategies, I think, to supplement any kind of capital maintenance and budget needs that we have. You know, overall, it's part of a larger issue. Someone mentioned it in an earlier answer, that our wants and needs exceed available revenue in the town. It's not a secret to anybody watching. I'm really looking forward to being part of a solution to that. I'm very encouraged by some of the things that members of the select board, Elizabeth Dion, have been talking about, bringing additional revenue streams into the town. Because ultimately, you know, the point is, in order to be able to do everything you want to do, you really do need to think about increasing the top line of that budget. And those will ultimately help support the school budget as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Rachel, your thoughts?
Well, first of all, I agree with both Jung and Amy that we do need to work on bringing in new and additional revenue streams into the town. Because really what we should be asking is, what kind of town do we want to live in? What kind of schools do we want to have? What kind of facilities do we need? Do we, what do we want Belmont to look like? And then asking ourselves, so, okay, knowing that, how do we make that happen? When it comes to the school committee working with the capital improvement committee, we have to collaborate. This is a joint project. I see it as sort of like, you know, the landlord and the tenant. Tenant, don't wait until, you know, water is gushing out of the wall to tell the landlord something is wrong. Let's work closely together, let's make sure there's plenty of communication about what's going on in the school. And that way, we can prioritize. We can see what's critical, we have to fix it now. And let's try to avoid just putting a patch on it. Let's try to fix it so it stays fixed.
Thank you, very good. All right. Citizens have criticized, we've mentioned this a little bit. Citizens have criticized the unions for keeping the schools closed for the first year of COVID and for the expensive contract settlement. What do you think should be the relationship among the school committee, the superintendent, and the unions? And I think for this one, Amy, we're back to you.
Yeah, it's my turn. So I cannot stress enough that a great strength of the town of Belmont is the quality of its educators. I've always believed that when you live in a town, you raise your own kids as part of a village. And you count on a lot of different people from a lot of different parts of your life to help you do that. And the Belmont educators overwhelmingly have been a part of our village, for our family. And I just will be indebted to them for that forever. It is in the best interests of the students that we have a contract with our union which allows us to retain and attract talented educators here. So we can't be under-market. We can't be trying to save money on a union contract which doesn't pay people enough so that we can't bring in the people that we want. You know, on the other hand, getting it right in terms of the finances is very important because if we are too generous and we overpay under the union contract, you will see, as we go back and look in this Bible again here, that we will lose the ability to fund other critical items in our school budget. So it's really a delicate balance. If we think about the fact that it's natural there's going to be a push and pull between the school committee and the union when it comes to negotiating a contract. However, if we recognize that we are far more aligned than we are different, both groups have the best interests of all students in mind and at heart, I think we can start from a place of common ground and we can be very, very, very productive. It is a very important contract to get right, and put differently, it's just one that we cannot afford to get wrong. My experience in negotiating deals under difficult circumstances makes me very well-prepared to get this right. And I look forward to being able to contribute to that in the future.
All right, thank you. Rachel, what are your thoughts?
Well, first of all, I'd like to point out that I'm also an attorney, but I worked in a very different type of field than Amy did. I actually worked in a lot of nonprofits, representing really vulnerable clients in front of huge institutions like Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security Disability. And so I'm used to negotiating from a place of not having much institutional power at my disposal, but helping the other party understand how our interests are aligned and how we can, you know, sort of make a win-win solution. And I agree, that's really what we need to do with the unions. We need to find a win-win. Because without quality educators, there's no quality education. And I think also we need to be careful too, that we don't devalue, say, like, our paraprofessionals in our schools. I know that during the pandemic, it was my son's paraprofessional that got him through that. It wasn't necessarily just the classroom teacher. So we need to make sure that, you know, all of our educators feel valued and that we're attracting the best, we're retaining the best. And, you know, keeping the students' best interests in mind and at the forefront all the time.
All right, thank you. Jung, your thoughts?
Well, I'm not a lawyer.
Me neither.
Yeah, so I'm an actuary and a mediator. So I also understand the point of negotiation. In my experience, union contracts is not just about money. Money is a part of it, but often, before the contract, you already know where the money, where you're going to land up, where the middle point is. The contracts are often about benefits, about just how to do the work and how do you get to do your job. So in BEA's case, it is about how they can take care of the student. It is about, you know, much, much more than just money itself, you know. Yes, we want to make sure the teachers are well-compensated. We love to have good teachers. And in fact, we have to pay for them in order for that to happen. But, you know, this is a partnership, you know. The school committee and the administration and the teachers each have their own work to do, each have their own responsibilities, but ultimately, we have to work together. Now, as far as COVID is concerned, it's not just the unions in my mind. It was a hard time for everybody. I work on the return-to-school task force, the committee recommending hybrid for elementary school students. So that's a committee that we work for the school committee for and made a presentation. We look at survey data from the community, both teachers and the parents. And what we found is, yes, there's a lot of people who were unhappy about remote learning and hybrid learning, but there's also a contingent of people who feel like remote learning make them feel safe as their kids learn. So hopefully, we'll be on that, and we can move forward from there.
Okay. Rachel, rebuttal one minute.
I just have a small, a small point to make, really, from all of us.
Sure.
We talk about protecting the students. You know, when I was, when I was a nurse, I belonged to the union. And that was a new thing at the time. And people, when you're serving someone vulnerable, sick people, children, people look at you kind of sideways about possibly going on strike or possibly slowing down or whatever it is. But the reason why the Nurses Union formed was because we were getting too mean patients. People were dying. It was for the safety of our patients, is what the real motivator is. And I think we need to keep in mind too, that the motivation is sometimes actually the best interest of our students, is what's going on. So we do need to listen to the union as well. Those are the teachers, they're there, they know.
Okay. Any other rebuttal or thoughts? All right, thank you, very good. Moving on. Being a school committee member means always having some people in the community who publicly disagree with you. And I'm here to tell you, they will have your phone number. And they will call you. How will you handle differences of opinion? How will you make decisions in light of the likelihood that at least half of your constituency at any given moment may disagree with you? And Rachel, we're with you to start.
Well, first of all, I find it a little hard to believe that 50% are gonna disagree with what the school committee has done all the time.
Be surprised.
However, because, and it doesn't matter if they do disagree. I believe that whether we agree or not, in Belmont, we all support having strong schools and excellent education. So we're all coming with the same goal in mind. But that being said, you know, I find that as an attorney, as a nurse, as a mom, often the most important thing is that people did get heard. Not only did they get heard, but they felt heard. So you need to be out there, not just providing opportunities for people to come when they want to, but looking for their input, trying to find where they're at, and seeking out people's input. It doesn't matter whether they agree with you, or they don't agree with you, if their point of view surprises you, that really means that you should have been hearing what they had to say, actually. And that was really my experience with the search committee, with the screening committee. We had to get out there. And I did sometimes hear things that I really didn't agree with. I did sometimes hear things that really surprised me. But you can't really make a good decision without knowing the entire story. That's how you get the entire story. And, you know, when you're making a decision, you have your data, the research data, the data from what comes from the schools, you have the teacher's input. But the experts on the children, the experts on this community, are the families and the people who've been living here.
All right, thank you. Jung, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So, well, actually, I think that no two people will agree on everything. So, you know, we will often talk to other people and find out that they don't agree with us. And I think that's okay. We can be disagree, we can disagree without being disagreeable. It's important to continue having conversations and really understand each other's perspectives. You know, as a mediator, we're taught to actually take the facts, take the understanding, and take down priorities. Different people believe in different things, but different people, you know, you can work with people's priorities and actually find common ground, find the win-win, and make good decisions that is good for the community. Now, we have, you know, we have a town with a diverse population. And I believe that does mean we will have differing opinion. And that is great, because that is what make us stronger and that is what allow us to find solutions. Just like the school committee is a group of six people, and ideally, we have different perspectives, different strength, so that we can complement each other. And I believe as an actuary and as a mediator, I can help with that.
Amy, your turn for that particular question.
Okay. I was just gonna say that, you know, Rachel stole my line here about the 50% of people disagreeing with me. I mean, I believe I have a charming enough personality to maybe avoid 50%. I mean, there would definitely be some, but I mean, hopefully not 50%. But in any event, I mean, doing a good job, whenever you're in any kind of committee setting, means a couple of things. I think you obviously have to listen to concerns that people raise. And I also like to think that I'm pretty flexible in the sense that I don't find that I dig my heels in and think, "Well, I'm right. I've made up my mind, and because I felt it should be this way, I cannot be convinced otherwise." And that's really not the way I like to approach anything. So I think from the, you know, town's perspective, understand that I'm always gonna be prepared to listen, and I'm willing to be convinced that we should see things differently. I mean, part of having a diverse community here in Belmont is that we do have different viewpoints and different interests. And that's all a very good thing. Because ultimately, it means that, you know, people can poke holes in things that you were really sure about, and you might find you're actually not as sure. But I guess from a voter's perspective, you know, what are you looking for here? And I would think that you would want to know that your school committee members are first always willing to listen to you and will always try to come up with solutions that make people understand, you know, the reason why you approached a problem in a certain way. That my decisions will always be informed, there'll be an educated decision. I, you know, won't be going into anything without adequate information and really without any other motivation. I don't have any agenda or any other motivation for running here other than to do what I absolutely believe to be best for Belmont students. I've now said I'm a lawyer several times, so I won't say it again, it doesn't make me popular. But I'm not afraid to take a position that other people don't agree with. You know, and most of the times, I find that I'm in the middle of arbitrating something, people have very different views, and that's okay. I'm strong enough to be able to stand my ground.
All right, we're gonna skip ahead a little bit. For decades, students have been able to reach for the sky and tackle courses that might be too challenging for some. What is your view on the current trend in some districts, and we hope not in Belmont, to level the playing field by eliminating high-achieving classes so that everyone studies at the same level? And Jung, we're going to start with you.
Okay. So I believe all the students' needs should be met. And that's being actually all of our positions, where a student need could be, they need support from support staff, special needs students, ESL students, and so on. But it also means that they need to be challenged and challenged the right way. If we, to level the playing field, I believe it's actually really important to bring the bottom up as opposed to capping the top. Personally, as I mentioned before, I had two years of ESL classes before I was truly ready to take on challenging classes. But that doesn't mean that I should be slowing other kids'... But that doesn't mean that I should be slowing other kids down at, in that process. Now, I was, I was well supported, I felt, and I was able to, um, take on college-level math classes. I took two years of college calculus at Queen's College. I took one year of college humanity literature classes, which was crazy for somebody who came into state like four years before. But I was there. It was awesome. It was great. I read like I never read before. And I feel like I really want our kids to have that same opportunity. If we limit what kids can take in terms of what they want to take, I think we're doing a disservice.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Amy, I'm going to go to you.
Sure, I agree. I, I'm really opposed to de-leveling because I think what we talked about before, academic excellence. I think it's very hard to say that we support academic excellence across all disciplines and in all forms, and at the same time say, well, no, we want to teach everyone at the same level. The goal of our educational system should be to meet students where they are. And we are not all in the same place at the same time. And our kids are not all in the same place at the same time. And I think in the interest of finding a way to meet everyone's needs, we need to have, you know, we need to be able to provide curriculum that is at different levels. The one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work because we're not all one size. I want to address, because I've heard this argument, that the reason we ought to de-level is it's an equity thing. It's that we need to offer the exact same thing to every child so that everyone is educated in the same way, and you graduate and you have taken the exact same classes at the exact same levels. Well, I really do think that providing a de-leveled, uh, instructional model um, is actually an anti-equity thing. Because in my view, what happens is that we're not meeting the needs of students who are looking for perhaps some more advanced coursework. And then what will happen is that we have students who have means to afford to supplement public school education outside of school. People will take extracurricular math. People will find ways in summer programs to take advanced curriculum. And that's great for students who can afford that or who have families who even know to look for those opportunities. But it's not everyone. So what we actually do is we widen the equity gap. Because what happens is you've got students with means and access can go and find ways to get to the advanced curriculum when it's appropriate, and we have students who don't have those things, and now they can't. So I ultimately think that we need to meet the needs of all students, and part of that is meeting them where they are and providing advanced curriculum when it's appropriate.
Thank you. Rachel.
Well, unlike Jung and Amy, I didn't grow up in a school district where there was a whole lot of offerings for anyone. I actually come from rural Arizona. And, um, my high school offered very little in the way of advanced coursework. Even though I was ready for it, not only could I not access it at my high school, the nearest place to access such a thing would have been at least sixty miles from where I was living. So I would never want to be in the position of saying that it would be equitable to deny students the opportunities that I didn't get and could have used. However, I think, first of all, we need to be looking at these things not from, okay, we're in high school and who gets this AP class and who doesn't, but from the level of elementary school, from the very beginning. Are we meeting students where they're at, like Amy said, and are we providing a curriculum that's flexible? So that students who struggle to access it can get the supports, the on-ramps? And students who quickly master it have a way to go deeper and remain engaged in the material. And it needs to start from the beginning. It needs to continue through the middle school. This is a particular problem we have right now where the middle school is kind of in a place where a lot of students are just either struggling or bored. And that's really, we shouldn't have that. There are ways to address this even when all the students are all in the same room with project-based learning, with providing more supports to our teachers, more professional development to be more innovative in their methods. And also I think that whatever is we do, we have to make sure that we're not stigmatizing students for the way that they learn, for the amount of time it takes them to approach something. And we also have to make sure we're celebrating all the different talents that our students have. Some are academically talented. Some are musicians. Some are athletes. Some have a lot of empathy. All of it should be supported and celebrated.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now it's time for my pop quiz question. And you can take up to thirty seconds, but you can take two seconds too. And that is, name for us two positive things about the Belmont Public Schools. And on this one, I'm starting with Amy, right?
I don't remember, but I'm sure.
I think I am, yes.
Okay, two positive things.
Yes.
Wonderful commitment to community. This has been a town always that fostered, that has existed because of all of the people who volunteer here. And we really cultivate that in our schools, and I think that's a wonderful thing about being here. Second, I think it's the quality of our educators. We, we don't have a school system. We don't have a school community without strong educators, and I think that we're really, really privileged to live in a place that has such great people here who are contributing to that.
Great, thank you. Rachel, what do you think? Two positive things?
Two positive things. Well, first of all, is how supportive the parents are all to the schools, to the educators, to the students, to each other. You know, the, the parents really support what's happening in our schools. Um, and are involved and want to know more. The other thing I would say is that, um, you know, not beyond the teachers, we also have really great quality staff of all levels. You know, when I go to drop my son off at the school, the janitor knows his name and is connecting with my son. You know, that's how you know your child is in a school where it's a real community.
Excellent. Jung, what are your thoughts? Two things.
Two things. Um, well, I love the teachers. My kids love their teachers. And, uh, whenever I am at school or, you know, in the playground drop-off pickups, you know, we talk to them. They're there. They are, they know our kids. They know what they're looking for. Just yesterday, my son's teacher said he's sweet, even though that he didn't do his homework. So, you know, like, it, it is not just teaching academics, but they are truly caring about our teachers. Uh, our kids, rather. And the other thing is I think we, you know, at least on the high school level, there are a lot of extracurricular activities for the kids. My daughter said that she want to play soccer, do marching band, and jazz. I don't know where she's going to find the time, but I'm glad that they have the opportunity to do so.
All right. Good answers. Thank you. That's wonderful. All right, we're approaching the end. We haven't quite covered all the questions we wanted to, but that's okay. Um, I'm going to give you each one minute to just kind of summarize and wrap up, and I think on this one, Rachel, we're starting with you.
Starting with me. Okay, well, you know, first I just want to emphasize that, you know, I have been here for our schools from the word go, from the time my son started kindergarten, I started out as a room parent. And I have been looking for ways to increase my impact and help our schools as much as I can to bring all of my skills to the table, all of the knowledge that I've gained in the work that I've done before and really put that to good use for our schools. Uh, and I'm just never going to stop doing that, whether, no, it doesn't matter what my official position is. I'm always going to care about our schools. I'm always going to care about our students, and I'm always going to care about all of our students.
Thank you. Jung, do you want to summarize for us?
Sure. So, um, thank you again for having this event, and I am so glad I'm here with Amy and Rachel, you know, have, keeping this conversation going. I think, you know, this is good for our town. This is good for our schools, and I look forward for more conversations coming. Uh, I generally believe that as an actuary, mediator, CFA, soccer coach, um, soccer ref, actually, and, you know, I have a background, experience, and representation to help the school system, to help the school committee to be a more well-rounded group, a team, and find the win-wins, find the solutions. So I love our town. I love our schools, and I hope you will vote for me as one of the two votes that you get on the election. Thank you.
Okay, Amy, you get the last word.
Okay, thank you very much again to Belmont Journal, Anne Marie, Rachel, and Jung for talking with me today. Um, as I said at the beginning of this session, I am the right candidate for Belmont right now. I'm running because I believe that all of the students in our schools deserve the very best experience that our public schools can offer them. I feel very deeply about this because I have been a beneficiary of so many things um, provided to me by this town and by all of the people who worked on school committee long before I thought about running. Um, having this strong public school district can be a game changer in terms of educational outcomes. We know this. And I am absolutely living proof that this is true. My experience in public school provided me with such a foundation, and it really has always fostered my belief that I could do anything I wanted to do. I could do anything I set my mind to, and I think all of our students deserve that. I'm in the position now that I have the right experience as a parent, a member of the community, and even as a lawyer to contribute to make things better for our students, and I hope you give me the opportunity on April fourth. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. I have to say, I've seen a lot of school committee candidates come and go, and I've never seen a group so prepared with so much really good information. And you all have amazing eyesight because I'm looking at this teeny tiny prints that you've all got your answers on. Way to go. So I wish.
Or they have great glasses.
Maybe, I guess. I don't know.
My glasses.
Yeah, I've got my contact lenses.
They have great glasses. I, I don't wear contacts.
So, um, good luck to all of you. And to our audience, thank you for joining us. I hope this session has been informative for you. And please do not forget to vote on Tuesday, April fourth. Thank you.